Every.
Thank you.
Look, we're meeting at several steps.
We can take motion of, from the minutes, 10 to 27, 2021 is written.
Second. Our favorite.
Aye.
Aye. Monday, October 25th, we're going to open a public hearing for Muddy Brook Estates located at 46-1, Providence Street. Set plan submitted by Gary Hallon. Applicant is DNF Fox.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Fox and I'm with Gary Hallon Engineering.
And then use that mic, Paul, and sell everybody in.
I can turn on the actual PA speakers if that will help.
So everybody, I don't know how many people are here for this. Just so they can hear.
So, um, we've got the brief overview of the, uh, of the open space, of the project, of the development on 23.74 acres of land. That's it.
Hey, be kidding.
We have, let me see, six, seven, south of the side of Daniels Road. So we're coming in with a homeless act, but in 350 feet long. It's going to stay much longer than we think.
Oh, second problem. Is anybody here, everybody here for this? Pretty much everybody over there.
They can't hear, see anything from this.
You guys have had passes on us this whole round. Want a couple of them?
Somebody use a spare.
I'm just gonna use a specific. Hey, sorry, Paul.
So, the, uh, for this, the development, you're implying that 50% of open space and 50% of the open space in the wetlands. In this case here, we have 21.738 of open space, or 70, over 70%, in the, uh, the open space, 76.84, 35% of the open space. We need to criteria twice, definitely, Paul. Um, the picture that you see here, this lighter green area is the limit of, an area of disturbance, the area that will be developed within the lots. The next color that you see here is the wooded area remaining within the development zone. darker green is open space. And the blue is the wetland within the open space. So that's just a basic overview of how the open space is already developed. The composing is develop a lot. The photography flows from east to west, as you're close to Muddy Brook. There is a, um, potential burn, right, across the hill, which kind of separates this, fortunately, this site. Not on the, not on the school side, which will be Muddy Brook. Not as a direct line of, of Muddy Brook. Eventually, it goes down, considering the public opinion. They're proposing a, uh, 24-foot paved road. The sidewalk on one side. 30 rocks. There'll be a drainage system, drainage and a, uh, drainage, no filtration, basically, drainage. Very, very close development. I, um, I didn't receive the comment letter from Brandon Darian in the book this morning. But I haven't had a chance to address it, I have it over. And, um, biggest concern that I have is with the, uh, I had requested some waivers in this project. So, one would be two million dollars, to heavily worth saying. Two would be what? Three would still, maybe, like, for 12, maybe, like, just. And I'm not wanting to get that.
We can't hear that.
The waivers are upon tree inventory. This is not necessary to decide, because we're going to leave a lot of trees. Second one is to just do a cross section with every 50 feet of the proposed road. Is, uh, really unnecessary. So I'll survey a circulation test, just before when we're ready to design projects. Uh, we, you know, we, we, we will do this until we get the road cut in, so we can get that more of the most. Pause on it is maximum grade requested, we requested about 10% grading with 8%. Even at 10%, there's a lot of filaments to take place, the shoulders elevated from the, uh, easily, easily side. I requested a waiver for the leveling area at the intersection because of the steepness of this in the beginning and the, um, rotation of the gassy in the leveling area in the beginning would, um, would age. Plus a lot of excess still of the gassy, but they don't believe we gave out. They're trying to keep the grade only across the gassy, but, um, those deals, it's just good.
They're gonna want, they're gonna want you on that, being on the gassy. They're gonna want you to have a lot, a lot of control of that, no?
Well, they didn't want, they didn't want, when we did Palm Street, they didn't want Palm Street.
Oh, really?
Um, because we initially used to go and then locate where the road was going to pump it and then we had to do test bits to find the gassy, find the top of the area.
Just getting out of it.
Yeah, just in mind. And, um, the minimum K value of the sag over the curve to allow 17 and a half to within each other. We don't visit the road with 20 feet to 28 feet and on one sidewalk to two. So, I'm not, I'm agreeing, but it says.
Do you want, want to add on this list?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, you could speak to those, uh, those three points. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh, I'm with Graves Engineering, I'm the engineering peer review consultant for the planning board. In reviewing these plans, I formulated an opinion on these three issues, but before I put my thoughts in writing, later, I consulted with the surveyor. And, um, we're both of the same opinion that, first of all, with respect to the leveling zone, uh, the leveling area at the approach to Daniels Drive, uh, I don't remember the exact rate, but it was around 7%, if I, if memory serves correctly. Let's do, there should be leveling zones so that in inclement weather, when the road can, traveling conditions aren't as good as we'd like, uh, not dry. A vehicle can approach the intersection, come to a complete, complete stop, queue, and then proceed on, um, if the, if the absolute leveling area. What's gonna happen is in inclement weather, people are gonna have trouble if they come to the top of the intersection. And furthermore, I think it's gonna encourage people to just pass through the intersection without having to completely stop. Uh, with respect to the, the road grade, 10% road grade, Highway Surveyor and I were the opinion that, in, in a road like this, uh, for maintenance equipment of the town, the town vehicles, once the power is standing and so forth, uh, fire engines and so forth, 8% grade is, is in the rules and regulations of instance. Uh, we recommend that I have that rate as well. Um, lastly, uh, with respect to the three, um, waiver requests, which I had concerns, uh, the, um, the K value of the vertical curves. The K value is, a vertical curve is when, a road's going up or down, how fast it changes grade as it, as it approaches another up grade or downgrade and what have you. In this case, they're coming down speed and then they go into less speed. And for, that's called a sag vertical curve. The sag vertical curve, um, the driving criteria on that is you want to have a gentle enough vertical curve so that headlights of the vehicle project far enough ahead so that an object in the road can be illuminated. And, um, for a 30 mile an hour design speed, which is the, the road of this, um, this design speed requirement, 37, a cave 37 is, is the minimum that's recommended by Ash, the Association, American Association of State Highway Transportation Efficients. Uh, and that gives a 200 foot stopping site distance, which is, which is what's necessary for a 30 mile an hour design speed. There was another, one other issue with respect to the alignment of roadway that, that brought up further in our letter, there was no waiver request, but it is, um, um, yeah, I can't, I can't find the comment number, but it's got to do with horizontal aligning, where the roof bends coming downhill or bends to the left. Subdivision rules and regulations requiring 200 foot minimum centerline radius. The plans propose a 100 foot centerline radius. Um, that vertical curve we spoke of earlier is at the same place as the horizontal curve. So, in my opinion, it's important to have a more gentle horizontal curve where the, where you've got steeper geometry. Um, you've got the 10, right now, you've got the 10% grade, basically, starting to flatten out with that horizontal curve, occurs and, and for that, for that reason of, of, um, a gentler, a gentler horizontal curve, I would recommend that the planning board stay within the minimum requirements.
Okay, how, how many waivers are on that?
Eight.
Eight?
We had an issue with three.
And you got an issue with three?
Three, that's right.
Those are the three most important ones that I feel. I mean, the, you know, the, uh, steepness is that we get in the leveling, I think those are very important. I mean, as a curve, yes, so, so, I mean.
So, if I could, if I could just, keep it on. Two of those, two of those three waivers were granted just recently, last month, to the property assets on the 10% grade, 17 and a half percent for, uh, K value to the standard curve. You know, and file was made at that time as a foot four streetlet, so area would be illuminated for the
On the curve?
To the vertical curve.
But that was on a private road. It's gonna be accepted by the town at some point.
That's right, the other one was, it was presented to stay and remain private.
Yeah, to be private all the time.
As it's part of the 100 foot horizontal, uh, that was allowing it, Apple.
Apple is pretty flat. Yeah, that was, all of it, and it was pretty flat, flat. I mean, I feel that though, coming out of that road, if, if this, if it's 10% coming up to that, and Apple starts at the end of that road on the Daniels, right?
Yeah, that's all, I mean, it's 8%, go into 10%. Well, it's 8% at Daniels.
Then it comes down.
Then it comes down.
I mean, unfortunately, and major snowstorms and everything, the town does not get to every street at a, you know, when everybody's ready to go to work. I mean, they can't get the whole town clean and start with three inches an hour. So, in a situation like that, I agree with Jeff. I mean, is it gonna, I mean, I know it's gonna be a little bit more fill, but.
Lot of them.
And Mr. Chairman, um, one of the issues too is, you know, in inclement weather, when the plow, where the sand is out there.
They're gonna make the hill.
A lot, they're gonna make the hill before they get the salt or the sand.
I mean, yes, I agree.
And, and that, you know, I came to this opinion before I spoke Highway Surveyor, but I, I felt it was important to speak to him to see, you know, he's, it's, it's his organization, his department, you'd have to, you know, that he's, you know.
He's a pretty, pretty reasonable guy on that end of it, so I thought something that was gonna be able, he'd let go, and I feel he was, he'd agree.
Agreed, and likewise, that's what happened with the waiver request, look, from a 28-foot wide road to a 24-foot wide road. My experience, it works good for subdivision like this, and, um, I understand that the cert, Highway Surveyor didn't have an issue with 21.
Yeah, I think it's less infrastructure for him and less side, one sidewalk, I agree with, because that's, it's a small road. Half the time, there better be very local traffic. You could probably be walking on the street versus the sidewalk. That's all.
I just have a question related to that.
Does this state your name and your address?
Sure, Henry Matthew, Green Daniels Road. Um, drainage, when you're coming out of this road going to Daniels, my concern is, Daniels already has a problem, unfortunately, it's right by my house, where the drains get clogged up. Guarantee, we're getting the rain, we might not be out here in the middle of the night cleaning drain out because it's getting clogged. So my concern is, is this, I mean, drainage going to the end of this road onto Daniels so that it doesn't get out onto Daniels and exacerbate the issue that we already have?
Well, I think it is.
I'm still, I'm still into the site from Daniels. I think that people will be pissed off, please. No, no, no.
Oh, no, 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 get on Daniels, okay.
So now, you pull into that, you know, if you're pulling into this new road, you'll actually be going downhill. So the water, because you might take some water away from you.
I understand that.
Maybe you don't help yet.
Maybe you get the water, Daniels, they run up to this one.
Put a pump in.
I, I have a question. My name is Barbara Clark and I live at number seven Daniels, and I happen to be in a butter when this road's gonna come out. And, um, we have just won several years of, um, on our road. The road is open up, it needs to be repaid. But the one sidewalk that we do have, which is across the street from my house, they just spent four to six months, the town community, tore up the whole sidewalk because my neighbor across the street had a natural spring that came out. And last winter, the road was iced, almost half a winter frost. The mail truck, it stopped because they delivered the mail on one side of our road. And, um, then even further up than that, they put in drain at this house, went down under the sidewalk into a catch basin. But even beyond that, which the town said they're gonna do, um, probably number 14, into another spring, same side of the road, that's gonna happen again this winter. So I would call it, oh, yes, the road, if anything's down, it's gonna head halfway down to Daniels, it's a mess. And, and if that road going into Daniels is going into development, it's gonna be hilly. I don't know how people are gonna get in and out of there with any issues.
Well, it's quite, quite slow now, and then there, he was asking for a waiver to make it a little steeper, which made, the waiver is not, you know, we haven't approved that, so, and those are the requirements of the town, you know, the 8%, so.
Right, and you could make it worse, coming up, and they're trying to get up on a, you know, I don't know, they think it was up one way, but we need to.
And just in grade at Daniels, um, at the intersection, it's almost 7%.
That was, yeah. At Daniels Road, South at Daniels Road, it's almost 7%.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just, just to set the record straight on you, on fill, as proposed right now, um, the subdivision street would come in and basically is headed directly down, that, directly downhill, not across the side of the hill. Um, my point is, there's other off horizontal layouts of a street that could be probably applied to this land, and it's not this single horizontal layout of the street which goes straight downhill is the only thing to that.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, it's, I think that it's, uh, some of the waivers that we give out are within recent, but it's something to do with the road and, I think, there'd be a little, I mean, I, I understand it's a little bit more fill, you know, a lot of it more fill, but.
You can try to, try to.
Saber it on asphalt.
Try to curb the road in this way, follow the slope, you, 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 you know, the station. You're stationed almost 400. Because you're looking at the gassy, you can't do anything when the gassy.
You gotta go straight across.
You gotta go straight across, and then, and then you have to be at hands to.
And, you know, again, I'm, I'm not designing it, I haven't talked to this fine, to know the client's desires were for, you know, um, you know, may not, some, a different ranger may not deal the maximum amount of lots to get this financials.
So, I guess we're gonna do a lot of nothing, probably, that we can.
No, go on, because we're gonna get to.
You'd like a little rock next to it, or with, with, uh, Javis?
I'll look at each one first, see if.
Yeah, it looks like it's less on, on and down now. Yep. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you. Focus on fire treatment, minute. Um, just one request that I would have is that the planning board consider the cistern requirement that has been put into every other subdivision, uh, when looking at this. And my suggestion would be to put it as close to the annual road around lot one or eight, um, so that, that only could be used on this.
Lot one makes more sense.
Sorry?
Lot one makes more sense, I think.
Yeah.
Not area you're ready to hear.
Right, I would just look to be, uh, as close to the annual road as we can, or one that could be used for residences on Daniels Road. As well as operationally, the closer it is to that intersection makes it easier for us to do a loop to keep that whole, as we're taking on activity.
So, thank you very much.
I haven't had any contact with you since you've taken over. I understand you only want one, because it usually means more.
So, yeah, we did modify the regulation, uh, our, our policy a couple of years ago. Before, there was, I think, a 30,000 gallon cistern, every four or five houses. We modified that to, uh, and what that ended up doing was, we have a lot of cisterns in town with no money to maintain them. So we modified that to a 20,000 gallon cistern, about a $5,000 maintenance fee that is paid to the town, it goes into a cistern maintenance revolving account. Um, and those cisterns need to be placed, they need to be within 1,000 feet of the property of the residences. So if you have a 2,000 foot long road, maybe 1,980 feet, if you put one right in the middle, then you can do just one. But if you have a 2,100 foot road, you'd have to put two, so that there's a cistern within 1,000 feet of the property. That's just operationally, it allows us to flow water with minimal, uh, reduce of engines.
So, I'll put a picture here, just to make it new register, I haven't.
Yeah, if you have a buyer with an email address, or call, give me a call tomorrow, and I'll email them off to you. And it does have the specs for the system.
I knew, I knew they had changed, because last time I did, this is why I didn't pick and figure you'd come in.
Yeah, because we've also changed the location of them. In the past, they wanted to walk the road by the, you know, this big apron.
Yep, yep.
We prefer to have them much closer to the road, just like the fire hydrants are, allow us access, and then it allows the homeowner who has that lot to have a little bit more grass.
A paved area on the front.
Yeah, right.
And I think that, well, maybe once you figure out where you're gonna put that cistern, whether I know what you're doing, you're gonna do it as best to get as close to Daniel's, you can just go over real quick.
Yeah, yeah. Probably next question. Probably next, Richard, I'll make sure that you did that.
All right, uh, so you had a.
Yeah, Richard Green from Two Daniels Road. Question I have, can they access this property from Daniels Road?
That's where the entrance, the entrance will come out.
Because we've been following this six years or so. In the very beginning, it wasn't 50 feet of frontage to put a road in. Then last week, we hear 134 feet. That's what this gentleman said. How much?
How much should we have?
How much is it to put a road in?
Mr. Chairman, from A.
Go ahead.
Research staff. The subdivision plans from 1980 have, if I could approach the board.
Yep.
Jump right in, if you don't mind, just kind of. Can you see it all right?
Yep.
Folks, hopefully you can see me. The original subdivision plans, instead of having this side of the right of way continue on, there's a small stub that comes down here, comes to a point, it's a V pointing up, and then it goes back out, such that the outside, the two outside lines are 50 feet. And then this property here, if it can follow this line, and follow
One line.
This line. Uh, there will be, uh, these two lines come to a point, and these two lines fit into that little V that was created with the subdivision here.
So you're saying they can't do it?
I'm, I'm saying there's a 50-foot piece of land as part of the Daniels right of way according to those definitive plans.
And how did that?
It's available, it's available too. Um, between that and this land back here, the width next down to 50 feet, but there's no room for off grading, if you will. And they've got to construct a road with the, with the road, the curve, the shoulders, all that grading needs to occur within the 50-foot line right of way. What they don't have is if they've got a cut or a fill, that normally occurs outside the right of way, there isn't land for that. That's one of the comments.
So that's something they will, you're gonna go to the line, probably.
Yeah, Bob's gonna have to go to look at it, figure out, how they're gonna address it. People with the Highway Surveyor on that issue, um, we knew of the grading issue because of the grading shown on, on the sidewalk. The sidewalk's laying down like that to tie back into the existing grade being right of way. I was, I'm under the understanding that, uh, the retaining wall shouldn't be placed within right of way to make the grade. Would rather have the property of that soon, but I'm in any of this.
Thank you.
Can I also ask? This, we have copies of documents from AS Elliot and Associates, and on it, it says, this, that's lot two, it was called, is not a buildable lot.
Right, it's a lot. And the lot is not building. It doesn't have, we don't fund it. So it's not a buildable lot, but it doesn't mean you can't put a road in, and it's like on, by itself, you can't.
Oh, because the road goes in, that makes it buildable?
Yes, because you go, you're getting the frontage off of that road now for each lot.
So that's important.
You can, you can sustain it.
216, Daniels.
Okay.
If you bring up the, the lot funded, you couldn't build one because of that. But I noticed when I looked at the plans, the lot sizes are smaller than what's on the town bylaws.
Because when you do it in open, when you do it in open space subdivisions, you get to do smaller lots, that's where all that land is coming, all the land that's given to the town, they're giving like 20 lots at 25 acres, what? 22 acres of this land is going to the town as open space, as wetlands, as upland, but it's all gonna be given to the town.
As compensation for?
That, as that is.
Matt?
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm Jack Hunter, I'm the interim councilwoman. Um, Gaiman's right, it, it, they're very common in Massachusetts. It's when you build a subdivision and you make the choice to make it an open space subdivision, you're trading off, giving the town land, hopefully viable land, which this seems to be, and in exchange, you give to build smaller lots with less frontage and less roads, so DEW has less to deal with as well. And that's the trade-off, and that's what's before them, is that trade-off order. Otherwise, you could build it and just, uh, keep the road going and build on the whole lot.
What, what is the, the town's plans for that property that they're gonna be applying?
They become, and it has to become protected conservation land.
Won't be built on, it won't be.
Can't be, no cut throughs through there, no pass throughs. No, there'll be a covenant, it's either gonna be, I don't know how this town works, but it's either a private nonprofit or a, oh, the town itself.
There's multiple different things we do.
Right.
Henry, I like the idea of open space, and my question is, who, the town owns the open space? The town, the town will, the Metacomic Land Trust, I mean, with this, this situation, and the town will own the land, but the Metacomic or whoever we, whoever the conservation restriction will be held by, there's a couple of different, um, people that we, we deal with.
So, because it's public land, I can go on that open space area that surrounds this development anytime I want.
There's gonna be walking path, there's multiple places in town that. There's gonna be walking path, there's multiple places in town that, that's already, we already have this situation.
Yep.
There's a Millville Road, I don't know, there's some conservation restrictions on, on the hill on 16. There's a lot of different places where you, this happens and you can go hiking on it, anybody can do, you know.
It's not like they can come out and say, you're a property owner, because it's not a property.
No, at the end of the, at the end of the cul-de-sac, they will make it probably a small section for like four or five cars apart. There'll be an entrance in there if somebody wants to go hiking or bike riding or walk, walk their dog to access that land. There'll be a sign that says, you know, this is money broke conservation land, or whatever they're gonna call it.
That's part of the trade off and they'll go here.
If you get smaller, smaller road width, you get, you know, there's less infrastructure for the town to have to maintain and, you know, there's less, they could end up building, you know, more houses in there. And then more roads and crossing more wetlands or, you know, replicating more wetlands. So this here leaves a lot of the land, you know, natural. Okay, you got.
Mr. Chairman, I heard something about playing by A.S. Elliott and I also reviewed that plan to expect the width of the right of way, the quote unquote right of way. And that plan was in agreement with the 1980 and respect to the geometry, where this Lot 2 corner, if you will, connects to that little stub road I referred to in Daniel's Road.
And that's something that's gonna be addressed with the engineers here, that's why we have our town engineer, he goes over everything and make sure everything's done in the way that, you know, in the best interest of the town. So who wants to go first over here?
I noticed at the end of your cul-de-sac, it's, it almost looks like an open space to, it's not a lot, or is that?
It's probably.
That's, that's, that's the conservation space.
Yeah, it's a bunch of town land already.
Yeah, we already.
You all look behind them.
Yeah.
And the conservation area between the.
The land that they give us is gonna be, is gonna be part of the land that the town already owns.
Chris R. Ford Daniels, so just so I'd understand, the conservation land, he could technically build on it now?
That, that land, if you, they wanted to, if they wanted to build a conventional subdivision, they could take that land, there is a lot more upland there. And you could, you could still work in the buffer 100 foot buffer zone from the left end, you can work up to 25 feet to the left. So, you know, there could be more houses, more roadway, you know, more expense to the town. Or we can do it this way, give them a little smaller lots, I don't know if you're familiar with Pond Street?
Yeah.
They did the kind of same thing over there, they gave a bunch of land to the town. You know, can make smaller house lots, but some people like less land. And then, then in turn, we get a bunch of land that we can use or keep for natural.
But in addition to the people driving to their homes now, we were gonna try to access the open space and do the hiking and the bike ride?
Well, I mean, anybody, I mean, there's not, there's not a 50 car parking lot down there. You know, they'll put three or four spots, you know, at the end of this.
And will the town reinforce that only people can park there as a parking parking spots? Or will people be able to park in Daniel's Lot down?
Well, I mean, there's that many people there that can park on the side of the road, I mean, it's not a private road, so.
It's not something that really attracts that kind of.
Yeah, you'll probably get more use out of it, you people that live close by than somebody driving from the other side of town would walk there.
We have hunters.
We live, except there's a lot of hunters.
Out of the town.
It's no hunting on the town.
Perfect all the time.
There was 70 acres of the original.
Downtown land.
Downtown land, yeah.
Downtown land, yeah.
Well, I mean, that doesn't, we can't, I'm not a police, so we just.
Plus all the wildlife and coyotes and them.
Right, that's why I was gonna save all that land for them.
Can I ask a question? Go ahead.
Question, how wide is it, planned street going to be?
The area is 24 feet, but the right of way is.
What? The right of way, the two sidewalks, or one sidewalk?
No, well, you can only do one sidewalk, but well, just, just, just the fact that we want to reduce the amount of impervious area on a project like this. Create less runoff, less impervious area. So you used to furnish from 28 feet, the road from 28 feet down to 24 feet. It's similar to, it's gonna be, it's a dead end street, it's not a true street, the amount of traffic it warrants, it warrants a lot of certain.
The width of the roadway itself, not through the sidewalk, from curb to curb is 24 feet.
Because our street Daniels is 50 feet.
Not the width of the sidewalk, no.
This right of way is gonna be 50 feet.
Just the exit, like the rounding and everything, that'll be 50.
50 feet, and that goes over the gas line?
Yes.
Is it gonna be blasting at this site?
Not, 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 nah. It'll be filled, it'll be all filled, there's no, no utility proposed under this, in this road, other than the underground electric telephone, I mean. For the, possibly maybe put up one pole to get by the gas line, probably on the ground, depending on the gas company. But I don't believe this is gonna be an issue with the gas company.
Well, they can get a permit from the gas company anyway, all their things.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, did they have the okay to go over?
That'll be a process.
They have an easy one, they don't own the property, so. The requirements that they have, standards, we can do that, we can do it.
Do they show up in any of these meetings and ask people to say?
They will deal with that directly.
To Daniel's Road, Terry Prince, I'm just concerned for myself and the rest of the street, the people that live there, because there's any danger to us going over this gas line.
Gas line.
They'll monitor, they don't, they don't typically, they have their standards, you know, they're safe.
Typically, they don't come through meaning like this and assure all of us that it's okay?
No.
Somebody will be there outside being inspected when they come.
Just to let, you know, in their defense, I have a friend working at the gas company and he said they will automatically get in touch with developers to make sure that everything is safe. That's part of the process.
Thank you.
And?
And these are my two comments, we just had two comments. On the tree survey, I'm a little concerned because the last develop, the last development that this developer did, he clear cut everything. And I don't want that to happen again, I don't know if a tree survey can help prevent that because we know what trees are there.
Okay.
So, and so, I mean, basically, I just want to prevent clear cutting and have as many trees left as possible. And then the other comment, it's like a short street, doesn't really even need a sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I, I am. I, my opinion, sidewalks in a small, a road that's small don't even get used, but, you know.
I mean, because with the low impact development, they're kind of discouraging sidewalks in some cases, so.
Okay. That's something that the board can talk about, maybe people will talk about that.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I could help you on a little bit with that, Daniel's Road has a sidewalk system on that, one of our comments is to tie the sidewalk system, if there's gonna be a sidewalk system on the subdivision street to the Daniel's Street by Kurt Cuts on each side of Daniel's Road. It's important to separate vehicles traffic and pedestrian traffic. And a waiver's already been requested to go from 28 feet to 24 feet, which chews up some of the area in which pedestrian would walk when vehicles are coming, it's gonna be a lot of traffic. But if the board were gonna consider eliminating the sidewalk, I would recommend to the board they reconsider whether or not they're gonna grant the waiver from 28 feet to 24 feet. So that there's sufficient room for pedestrians to safely walk. This road is about 800 feet, I'm trying to remember. I forget the numbers, but, sorry.
850.
850, thank you. So the point is, I don't know, out of the other, yeah, this, this, you're gonna hit two schools of thought on sidewalks and, you know, certainly it doesn't, a road like this is not marked, it walks with two sides of the street. You understand that, but nevertheless, we've, I've got arguments, and people say, why do I have to put a sidewalk on my new subdivision street? There's no sidewalk out on the street we're connected to, well, it will be at some point, just like we need a 50 foot right of way because at some point with the other utilities there, maybe after our time. But the point is, you know, with the sidewalk there.
Right, we'll just, we'll keep going, just leaving it at the point.
Yeah.
I can just, I can just, the subdivision that you're talking about, the lot size there was 45,000 square feet. You know, pretty much, we put in a septic, a well, they had to pretty much clear cut, it wasn't, it wasn't my choice. You can't, you can't, you just gotta achieve. This, we made these lots bigger, you know, 40,000 square feet, you can see that, this, this lot here, here, that's not what we made on the touch. But actually, these lots, we only made on the touch, it's not.
We can, we can put that in right of way, pretty much, so that.
Yeah, it was in the decision, the Pond Street, that it would not be any clear cutting, it was clear cut. So I wanted in the decision that it was clear cut. The gap has a question.
Yeah, I would suggest we put it on a plan, no touchstone. That's what we have done in the past.
Well.
Where there's gonna be no cutting.
Yeah, this side, this side of the street is pretty easy to do that. This side, you know, it'll be better.
Don't look like you can do. Or you're willing to do it, we'll figure it out.
Bob, you still have a question?
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna get, it's gonna get lively and children here because we've got the local here, it's a great set of, that's a great. The students is gonna extend beyond, there it is, and you want to, just if you can, because, but on this stolen wall here, there's a habitat line, so let's, this is mostly to do on this, on this side.
But most of it's marked on it, maybe you can put something on it. Yeah, and. Maybe, Bob, go ahead.
Lot 350 Milliput Street, I know single family hosts go to, or.
Yeah, single family.
Single family.
Go ahead, sir.
We don't have streetlights on our streets, or are they gonna add streetlights to this street or in our street?
There was one proposed, the, Tom and Derek proposed that we add at the entrance.
Right, at the entrance, so when you're driving out, there is some light coming in at night, you don't have streetlights on your.
Correct.
Yes, so you, you know, there'll just be one there, just to show that's not a driveway here or, you know, people aren't pulling a young driveway to get to that road.
Richard Green again from Two Daniels Road, why, why is this listed as 46-1 Providence Street? Which is misleading to people that get this letter that say, oh, that's over here, doesn't affect us at all. Why is it, and it's also changed over the years, it's been labeled different things, I don't know if that's to confuse the people on the street or.
I don't know about that, but I mean, it's probably.
That's what the assessors, that's the state's with the assessing tables.
They are required to list what the assessor.
Why is it 46, why is it Providence Street?
Well, that's what they funded, you said.
Yeah, you don't have a frontage on, on, on your road, there was originally one big lot from Providence Street years ago.
Years ago.
Where the horsepower is and all that.
There's no frontage on Daniel's, but how are we getting in there?
They have a 50 foot right of.
So, the back, I'm sorry. Peter D. Francesco, 7 Oak Hill Road, is there any consideration with regards to wells that are going into these properties? Any effect for the neighbors and including on Oak Hill Road? I know houses that went up on, is it Westfield or Warfield? Couple of years ago, had an effect on my neighbors across the street, but through well water. Any considerations there?
I mean, they can't get a well in there.
They can't build.
They can't from wells.
I understand that, but.
I mean, that's all, I mean, we can't predict what wells are gonna do, we're just a plan of one. We just try to follow the rules and regulations of the town.
The wells would be ultimately under P P's.
It's just, it's a mistake.
Septic, you're beating water out of your, you know, you'll have.
Wells, individual wells are still under, under water.
They are now.
Because if one of the water supply will, single, one source, that's different, but it's not individual ones.
We have a lot of things that the two engineers have to talk about and work out before this might not even happen. So we've got, it's not accepted, you know, these.
That brings me to my question. Six or seven years ago, I started working on this whole area. And I worked through, you know, a couple of years ago, Bill McHenry wanted to go in this way and put in portable housing and put two town wells in there, and how are we gonna do all this? And then it's kind of what I keep hearing is that that development's gonna end up on Providence Street. So trying to research how this lot eventually may be longer than I would have, how it's split, one to two, I read leads, I wrote preclaim leads, I have all kinds of historical information. My one leading question for this, have you guys at all got a legal opinion on this whole area? Where lots get divided and things gonna go under the cement and things get blocked and not recorded? I mean, I had a hard time finding back in 1994, when this street was accepted through a warrant. And I have made a lot of phone calls and talked to a lot of different people, I finally had my information. So that's why we're just trying to be proactive here. But I do a quick question for all, also, if someone could answer my question, the lawyers, where the road's gonna end? I know they were there about five months to bay, saw them there all winter, you know, putting up markers and everything. As far as all our lot lines go, especially Dawn and I that are doing others. Can anyone come out and show us exactly where that road's gonna end? There's one little pink flag, we don't know exactly from where to where from our points, you know, our lot lines, where this is gonna be, can that be done soon? Because you're able to love the pink, where exactly it's gonna enter?
At the end of the ground, we can reach this form.
There's nothing there to show us, Bob, there's nothing.
Well, let's, let's, let's let the engineers do their job first. And then, if this thing even come, goes anywhere.
Okay.
And then when the time comes, you know, they can show me where it's going, where it's gonna go, and where it's gonna go. I mean, as long as, you know, they've done all their work, I think things have gotten a little bit better since the early 90s or the late 80s when the land and recordings were done literally now. It's a lot easier.
I understand, it's a process.
Yeah, but stuff, yes, factor. So let's, let's, let's get these guys to do their job, that's what he's here for.
We have legal people there, that's why I'm saying, is, is there a legal opinion as to if people are sure that this is all legitimate? Because some people are saying it's not legitimate. How would that survive?
This is, this is, this is our legal opinion right here.
I'm an engineer.
No, it's surveyed, people have to stamp, there's, you know, a surveyor and engineer, they stamp that this plan, it's their responsibility. If you can tell us how it's different, you know, a lawyer's not gonna be able to, title search, they're not gonna be able to figure out what's right and what's wrong out there by, you know, sort of, that's our area.
No, but lawyers will work with people like him, we just, we just wanna be sure.
We, we just title search, this district, these people own the land, they bought the land.
Yep.
This is, you know, a local engineer, has been in business for years, is, is, did this engineering and surveying. And then our engineer is overseeing everything and putting it into the right way. We'll all have to follow our guidelines and not stay regulars. So that's what we're all looking for right now.
Okay.
We'll let them work things out, we'll come back, we'll probably continue to come back.
Mr. Chairman, if I might on that point of legal opinion, this, that's, that's not necessary, you know, I have seen it for subdivisions. There's a registered professional land surveyor, plans, stamped plans, there's a registered professional engineer who's stamped those plans. The registered land surveyor asked to do with the, the property lines and so on and so forth of the overall boundary and creating the right of way and creating the lots. The applicant's before you for residential subdivision and the intended use of single family development, which is allowed in the zoning district, that answers the legal opinion right there.
As long as I have the same questions, guys, go ahead.
You just outlined a number of next steps, what's that timing look like, we got a year from now?
No, no, it's probably the next meeting, they gotta come back.
So where would that be?
Uh, the next meeting, when's it again?
October 8th.
What? Yeah, what's, uh, what's, should he just, what's your name and address?
Chris Ford Daniels.
Ford Daniels.
It'll be November 8th, if they can work it out now.
They might should go, they won't have to.
Yeah, so it might not be.
The 22nd.
Uh, the 22nd.
22nd of November.
Yes.
Thanks, Neil.
And that question for the, the town, I wanna run that line in there, I think they were just, right away to drill the well, for the town buildings. Dan?
I think I mentioned this last floor, that plan, I believe is done, and whatever they need for the well, they're gonna come out, probably.
Yeah, they, so that's not, no, that's what they wanted originally, yes, yes. Go ahead.
Um, my name's Larry Pearson, uh, I'm a resident of Millville. May I, may I speak on this matter?
Yes, good.
Um, it is my understanding regarding the Conview Estates, that Mr. Parkton and Mr. Aguanto have been not only noncompliant, but defiant in what the stipulations were there for this open space requirement. Uh, what is the progress on, on their, for me, of work being done there? And how can we ensure that those violations will not occur in this situation again?
Uh, thank you.
Uh, they. The way, the way we ensure that it's not gonna occur is that we're not gonna need, always makes it a topic that was.
I can't hear you.
Uh, uh, Mark.
That's a mutual decision.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're not doing anything, this, this, uh, this plan is not getting accepted until that, that issue is resolved. That's, that's from the plan. And so, that's, that's, thank you, though.
Make a motion to, uh.
Just take one more question, go ahead.
Um, I'm a customer, 14 Daniels Road. What is the notification circumference of these meetings?
300 feet.
I'm sorry?
300 feet.
It, it's 300 feet in a square inch or five.
Okay.
You've got notified, so the next meeting, we'll, we're gonna, um, continue this meeting, we're gonna give a set of date, so you'll know that you won't get notified again. You'll, so this, you're gonna take this date that we give you, just mark it on your calendar.
Making motion to continue the public hearing for Muddy Brook Estates to November 8th, 7:00 P.M.
We need to, November 22nd.
November 22nd.
Sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys will be able to work this out, we've been working this together, did everything, resolved, um. Yeah, and I don't think, uh. Just, we need to put that vote on and stop on.
I don't want to jack, yes, I am.
I'm telling you, I don't want to do that.
Stop. Hey, guys, we just moved off the talks, we can finish our stuff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 5 Morris Drive to November 22nd.
No, no.
35 K Road.
I did that. I need you, if you're gonna do 35, okay, if I'd like to do a little, or any to, and then I'd like to endorse the decision.
So, we gotta, we gotta, this is the public hearing for the site.
We're having a, like, we just have to continue, yes.
Only the site right here.
So, let's, let's go down. Continue the public hearing for the site, 35 K, so, uh, November 8th?
Yes.
All right, hold on.
Well, depend, you, you're gonna accept.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna run on the decision tonight.
Run a decision, and once, once that happens, uh, we go into the appeal period. Once the appeal period has lapsed, then, then we'll, we'll continue until the hearing.
So, we'll put you on on the 22nd, that may be.
That's probably more accurate.
Correct. Make a motion to continue the site plan for 35 K Road to November 22nd, 7:00 P.M.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, I just put, while we're on this page here, let, let's, let's give us a second when we do the decision. Uh, now, just do that by a moment. And we're gonna continue, make a motion to continue.
Okay, James, make the motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 5 Morris Drive.
We can go to the, uh, put it for the 8th, we gotta continue, we're getting the, the. Oh, really, you, you're not getting a motion right now? Oh, you are, you're, you're continuing, all right? You're getting, there's a continuation of both of you. Well, you're not continuing that yet, are you? You're here for it, right?
Yeah, we're here for it, it's not, I didn't put a continuation, I'm a continuation of public hearing.
Well, you did the same thing for the, yeah, okay. All right. So, let's take care of this, let's take care of this with, uh, let's take care of 35 K.
35 K Road.
Get that done.
I'm learning.
No.
So, 35 feet, um, you know, I'm new here, but, uh, the hot potato came to me. Um, at the last I talked to Bill, well, not the last, but when I got on the job and was asked to write the decisions. Um, Jeff here had started it and asked for some assistance, I then went through all the minutes, I went through the video, I talked to Bill, I talked to Jeff. I talked to town council, maybe that's it, and Gail, just to get up to speed on, you know, what the issues were, what you voted on, what the conditions should be. Uh, I granted it, I gave it to town council, she approved it. Uh, and other than your standard conditions, uh, there are a couple, because I know you're part of here. Um, of interest that I had, and Bill thought that made sense. Well, we're gonna have the final suppression system. Prior to issuance of a building improvement, final revised plan shall be submitted, which demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that the setback to the south of the property is at minimum 165 feet or greater to the nearest residential building along with landscaping, utilizing native planting, and burms, et cetera, to offer the most reasonable protection possible for the owner. And that's really the only decision, and you'll see the filings, you'll see the waiver request, and the granting of the waivers. Uh, so, you know, it's time to do it, and it's time to get this reported. Uh, I did, uh, I went on an old, I guess, an old, uh, signature page. So, what I'm gonna recommend is if you all, are you guys available tomorrow to come and see Gail and sign it? Is that possible, the three of you?
Yes, I can.
I have the all available.
It's gonna come Wednesday?
No, Wednesday, right? We can just, we can just stop by and see Gail and sign it, you know?
Yeah, so as soon as, as soon as you sign it, it will go to the clerk, and then it seems like the latest will be Wednesday. I know, that's an interesting.
Yeah, I noticed that side sheet, because my understanding was that that meeting, that it was unanimous vote?
It was.
Right, but it doesn't say that on.
Yeah, that, that was. Whatever we do decides, like, I guess, just to clarify.
There's so many people trying to write this decision.
I, I understand, and I've been sympathetic, and more than than ever.
Yeah, certainly has.
It's like, good.
Um, question, there is a second question. Within the board, there was a, there was a discussion, as far as whether berm or no berm. I, I honestly don't care. But it would be beneficial to us to determine, are we having a berm, or we not having a berm?
Well, maybe we should make a note of that, longer than this, maybe we can, I mean, I think.
I put as an option, the, the whole thing I got out of the.
It doesn't say that, though, as an option.
Oh, yes, it does.
And, uh, let, let me just a question to the, to the, the residents. Would you rather see a berm there with some trees on it?
No.
Or would you rather see, uh, no berm to the trees?
Doug, I've been, uh, seven days, I'd probably have to see the decision personally.
So, there's, yeah, there was gonna put a berm that's gonna go, he was gonna put a berm along that property line that would divide his land, well, the land, I guess, the other piece of commercial land. Basically, gonna give him privacy for, for your, for your, for your, I mean, would you rather, would you rather see it, or not? You're the one that's gonna be a part, right, that is directly, direct in.
Mr. Chair, when I, and I can see the applicant's concern, we can reword this, so it's possibly using, but remember, you have to approve.
Well, I know, but if it's in the decision, if we sign it, it's, then it's there.
Exactly.
I was, these two, there's been a lot, there was a lot of stuff going on with these residents, and, and he's, he's been trying to work with them. And they, they would rather see the, see the berm, and he's okay with doing it, and it gives them some more privacy, then, then let's keep everybody on the, that's what, they're trying to work together.
So, they have given an option.
No, we've got to see the yes and no, they want it, they get it, if you're okay with doing it, be the way.
Some people like them, some people.
Well, that's, I mean, sometimes it's an iso.
It's an iso for some people.
I agree.
If you go on Plain Street in Roaldale, right on the corner, uh, there's two houses, and there was an industrial apartment, not mine, and the other one.
Across the street.
They, they bought dirt, I mean, a ton of dirt, and they bought dirt to build a big berm.
It looks like.
I think the house owner would like to make it go away if he could, but it's hard to get rid of that much dirt left.
Right. That's all overgrown weeds, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a stomach to maintain for people, but natural vegetation, I don't.
Yeah, what, what do you have to be thinking back there?
Eric Lodge, 3 Bates Street, Doug and I were just discussing, we'd like to, to review the, um, the decision.
Well, the decision's gonna have it on there or not, so you're gonna tell us.
The decision is here.
And we're signing it tonight.
I guess my position would be, if, if it doesn't have the required buffer agreement to the bylaws, doesn't matter if there's a berm down.
Yeah, unfortunately, I thought that's where we were going. That's why I left it up to the applicant, and maybe the applicant could work something out, and we'd give him as much leeway as he wanted.
Okay. You guys can work it out.
If you can't work it out, then I.
I mean, it's like, we're not, we're not talking about, we're not, we aren't even over that whole thing.
So, I am going to change that condition to, um, to possibly, I'll, I'll make it so that it's arbit, it's not arbitrary, but it's up to the applicant to decide how he's going to buffer it, and then it's gonna come to you to site plan review, whether this is what you want, and he can't get a building through that building.
There you go, you guys can figure it out, you can now.
I'm just gonna give you my opinions. The last thing that I would do is put a berm, you're gonna regret it because it's gonna look like hell.
Yeah.
And only saying that because if it was going around anywhere near my property, and I knew that that iso was gonna be impossible to remove after, because no one's gonna wanna come in there and remove it. The natural ventilation is far greater, just, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that, that this gentleman is, is more than happy to, to make that natural.
They'll put you out.
Trees, either way.
I, I did it, I did it down along the thing, and I didn't, I didn't even have to do it there, but it.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think the trees are always gonna grow, I think it looks good, yeah, so I mean, if the trees are growing. You wanted to, so what would you, would you guys rather to see, trees?
Trees are good, uh, but I, I just, I wanted to make sure that we're all speaking the same language, uh, I'm sorry, I don't agree.
Jack, okay.
Jack, uh, I'm American.
Hey.
So, you just used the word buffer when you're referring to the, the berm area. Can, can we make sure that we are absolutely 100% clear in the decision on what buffer means versus what berm means, et cetera? I, I'm, I'm speaking.
Well, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put, do you want, would you rather see?
I'll stay with the berm, so we can get rid of that.
I guess I'm, I'm speaking in the context of, you know, town bylaws and whatnot, there are, there is wording regarding buffer and so on and so forth, so that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand.
This would be ventilation, what I put down was, um. The setback to the property is at minimum 165 feet or greater to the nearest residential building, along with landscaping with native planting, as was mentioned at the meeting. I'm giving rid of burms, to offer the most reasonable protection possible to the owner.
Okay, thank you for the background, I appreciate it.
And then when you get the plan, you do the site plan, you can put in there, you gotta put abreviating, you know, something that's.
I just think some people like to have a vice.
Well, you, you know what, maybe you have, maybe you can have that conversation with each other, and say, hey, listen, what do you wanna use for, what would you like to see there?
That would be wonderful, if you guys team in with a plan.
Yeah, well, they gotta come in for the site plan.
They have.
And then, then you're gonna show the landscaping, what you're gonna put on there for a buffer, whether it's gonna be, it just, what kind of trees, it's gonna be, like, a daffodil, put daffodils.
And he can't get a building through that until they approve the plan.
Yeah, and that's gonna be something that's gonna, you know, we're in a site plan, you know, we, we already went through a lot of it already, but we'll get through, these, these little things like that will make life go a lot harder.
I know.
You know what I mean? Okay. So, we'll get the decision done, and then we'll move on.
Did you vote?
We did not.
Make a motion.
Yeah, you can. That's a pretty question.
I'm excited, I mean, we, we have.
Make a motion to, uh. I can show you some of this. Who sent the decision, oh, special, I'm sorry, the West Special District, the 35 K Road.
Thank you, yeah, you're welcome.
Say, wow.
I do wanna get that, thank you guys. All in favor? Sorry about that. I'm thinking something else, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Jack for taking on the.
Oh, no, I, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can.
I felt like I was in a quicksand.
No, I've been sleeping well.
Um, okay, so, you're gonna take your, walk.
I'm gonna.
You go forward. That's how it gets.
Jack's.
Yeah, okay, good, that's fair.
I'm gonna send her a clean copy tomorrow.
Okay.
And please try to get in.
No, I'll come see you tomorrow, I gotta come see my CEO, Sam.
James, Wednesday.
I'm coming to town.
And I bring it right to town when I'm needed.
All right.
Oh, yeah, as soon as I say.
All right, thank you very much, uh. All right, let's move on to the next invention. Yeah. You don't leave me for it? No, we're good, thank you, man, thank you.
Sorry, did you guys vote on that?
Yeah, we're voting on the decision, now we'll deal with the site, site plan, and as long as you guys are all, you guys, get your, all your ducks are all, as long as you're happy, we'll be happy.
I just have one last question. When will I be able to get a copy of the decision from town?
We're hoping by Wednesday, uh, we need three of them, James can't make it tomorrow, instead, he'll make it Wednesday.
Okay, well, we'll get everything signed, get it recorded, and.
Yeah, I can give you a graph, you know?
There are some typos in here that I'm.
It's all right. All right, thank you, appreciate it, thanks, guys.
All right, next time, good night. All right, continue, no.
Um, I got some small school friends over there.
Yeah. Next.
And I got, um, here's what I'm saying, says.
That you got tomorrow? You, you see it?
No, I have not, I haven't.
No.
But make sure that's.
Yeah, well, he's gonna, he can just, do you guys a little bit easier to hold, you're gonna have to take some of those with you, he's gonna have to take them, who is, uh, in, uh.
And I have, um. And then I have drainage analysis.
Okay.
So, here I have responses to your comments. Uh, that's what I can give you, and, uh, that's all I have as well. Um, actually, I'm. Actually, um, one thing just wanted to give you a heads up, Lois. To demonstrate the site plan is what we got, we added a third one, third segment, so, uh, we changed the scale a little bit. So we have seven three feet and stuff, any comments? We'll probably shift that, or shift back, or shift. And then, the other thing that, uh, we found, there's one comment, uh, we spent quite a bit of time on, and that was the, uh, on our topographic plan, somebody did one of it, uh, we had a twelve inch pole, um, going out of our detention body to the adjacent property. And, um, Grays Engineering's people come out to the field, and they picked it up as an eight inch diameter. Um, now, we did this survey back in two thousand and ten, I'm not sure exactly what happened there, uh, with that, with that total, but in fact, it was a, an eight inch diameter pipe. So we changed that on the plans, and also found that it was actually draining toward our project, not into the next area, where we finally discharged into a, a bigger body of water. I think it was supposed to drain, follow our property out. So I had, um, tried to contact Weddans, um, by email, so forth, but I, I haven't gotten a response, I have not gotten a response from them, um, regarding any records they may have. The, the adjacent property, uh, was part of the, uh, Kimball Industrial Park, and that went back to, I think, nineteen ninety-eight or so. Clearly, also, I'm not sure what they have for records.
But doesn't, didn't Gray Wolf own that?
Well, I was looking for, uh, to find out exactly how they intended for that eight inch pipe to discharge.
Out of the street, is it coming from the street?
No, it goes onto the, it goes onto the property adjacent to ours, which is the propane, um.
Okay, our cool is a little property.
And then the other thing that we found, um, farther closer to the fire station was, there's a thirty-six inch corrugated metal pipe that goes under the road. So everything that drains into that wet man between our property and the propane.
Goes under the road, goes down.
Yeah, makes its way under the road through a thirty-six inch pipe now.
Yeah, and it runs down behind.
Yeah, so we, basically, what we wanted to do was get what, uh, folks had as records, and, and make sure that we conform to that, the two of us intended.
I don't know, I mean, I, I got the email, I'm on conservation also.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I got the email, 'cause you sent the email.
Yeah, to conservation.
And I got it, and I, I, I am on conservation.
Oh, okay.
So, so I know what you're asking for, I know the property, but I don't know what, I think, you, you gotta design what you have for yourself.
Well, what I did was, um, the, the, um, from, from the batch records, there was, uh, they had calculated a flow of discharge out there, I think it was three point four, three point five, three feet per second. So what I did is, I, I kind of backed into that, um, that volume, and, um, slowed it accordingly, so that it handled that amount of discharge. So in other words, I didn't slow it, so that it'd be more, more CFS going to the adjacent property. So I, that's how I approached it, so, what we're gonna do as part of the project is we're gonna take that pipe up, relay it properly. Now, the invert at the uphill end on our side was correct, but there was no invert, um, on the downhill.
That's something embedded there for so long, that, I mean, in fact, I don't know, actually, stormwater management wasn't even a play back then.
No, that was about, stormwater management starts in ninety-six, I think I can boil this down real fast. The water goes from the thirty-six inch pipe between this client site and, um, Accudi Oil, or whatever they are now, goes toward the fire station under the road. Whether that eight inch pipe goes uphill or downhill, water's not gonna build up on that, on the outside of the pipe, on the Accudi side of the pipe, when the water goes up on the other side, even if the pipe goes this way, as soon as the water gets hot, water level gets high, it's gonna go on the other way. So as part of your work, the son climbs property, you might wanna just have it slowed it properly, or, or just leave it be.
Yeah, I agree with you, but the only problem with that is now, uh, it's definitely from, from my, my concern is that you're dealing with a six inch diameter pipe, not an eight inch, if you leave it at the slopes, and, you know what I mean?
And that, that actually be removed, and, and if you need to put, you put a bigger diameter pipe.
Yeah, we've got a slope, and I'm, I'm not sure why it's like that, if it heaved, or, I mean, there's a little bit of a banana shape to it, um, if it did heat from the frost or something.
This is all on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that pipe has to get ripped out to be done, that's so be it, right?
Exactly, yeah, and, and there is a drainage easement there.
Yeah.
Which, uh, we also showed on our plan down too, that was a, an actual easement, um, kind of, yes.
Well, maybe we'll just get these, we'll look at it, you take these, and you take a peek at everything, see what you think, if there's any questions, you can talk to Bill, and, uh, and they say, yeah, I mean, if it's on your property, you can make the right adjustments to make it the way it's supposed to be, I mean, I can see it, it was on the road.
Yeah.
At the start.
And again, I, I was just trying to get the records and find out what the intent was.
Yeah, I don't think there was ever, the last time anybody was down there was Mike Salvo, and he was doing the end, when you're looking straight at it, I think the buses are on the right, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and then straight ahead, Mike Salvo, and all that piece of property. I think he did some of that drainage basis in there, but that was so long ago.
It was, the, the way it lands is now, was, was back in twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen, when we looked at the other branch.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Bates was doing something, that's right, that's right, yeah. So, I guess, I think we'll let Jeff take a good look at it, and you, you guys can work together, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll talk at the next meeting, you think you wanna go to the twenty-second, okay?
Uh, we're not gonna have a review letter turn around.
All right, so, November twenty-second, okay with you?
Uh, November twenty-second, uh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, um.
I have a question.
Okay, sorry, Jack.
I just, I was given a new set of hydrology comps, but I feel that the planning board should have a set as well. I need to take these back with me to review them.
Yeah, okay.
But I think the applicant should submit another paper copy directly to your office.
Okay. You have that, though? Okay, you can get another set of those for us, please?
My question is very, you know, I'm new here.
Yeah.
My understanding, because I saw some cross emailing, you, are you, these are your third iteration of plans now? Because I know Jeff has commented twice.
Um, it's the third iteration of plans, before we get the first review letter up for this site, we get the first set of revisions, so our first review letter covered the first two sets of plans.
Oh, I see, nice, that's where I got them.
Yep, this is an updated version from the first.
We delivered a plan to his office, and Mr.
You guys know what you're doing.
Well, don't, don't take so.
You know, to be honest with you, I didn't expect you needed to come here today. I mean, what, all we talked about is some off of someone else's property, and you could have delivered these any old time.
Well, like I said, I didn't know if you wanted them here, delivered here, because I can certainly bring them up to his office anytime.
And you need to have a book like that, and we need a book here, I mean, no, but I, I'm gonna look into that something, I can get you something that can help you from, from back in twenty, uh, from Bates.
Okay.
Okay, I might have something.
But the Bates, this material, the existing conditions here, is the same as the existing conditions with Bates and Bowles.
So you already have it.
Yes.
You're looking for something actually further.
Bill, Bill's looking for what was the intent of the original pipe, and again, my opinion, I don't think we need, it's been this way, but it's supposed, common sense tells me it was supposed to be in that way, because if it drained the other way, then it's gonna fulfill the stormwater basin, it's at the intersection, and the lowest point where water's gonna run out there, it's gonna run across the street and down toward down the progress route.
Yeah, so that's not, as long as you just make it, your pipe's still what they're supposed to on, and your end, everything else is gonna, that nature's gonna take its course.
So, we're gonna do all this electronically, I don't, not for grade account necessarily, but, and from now on, everything goes with the planning board, with the department, except for Jeff, he can relate to that.
Right, yeah, that's what I think.
You don't have to submit them at a board meeting, it's better if you submit them before the board meeting, so they're prepared, and we.
Well, he did do it.
It's, I, I understand that, and my intent was to do that, but, um, things kind of got locked down the last couple weeks, and I really didn't have them ready to give it to.
No, I understand. But you're right, you couldn't save the trip here today, you couldn't continue, we could have continued it to the, to the twenty-second by, by us, just doing it without you, and Jeff went, you know, took his stuff and went on his way, but, well, uh, that's fine, we came, we like to see you. Give the excuse to get out.
Well, you didn't tell me that.
Yeah, come on, if he paid us to do this.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for five hours and drive to November twenty-second, seven P M.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanna take this one?
We gotta do the minutes.
Yep.
Did, did the minutes.
Oh, you did?
No, it's, it is.
He did the minutes. First thing we do.
Yeah.
Jackie B.
All right, B. I'm getting it, yeah, what about this thing on the bottom here?
Oh, no, that, no, that's, oh, no, I meant that, that's. No, this here is on. This here, right here. I'm making a motion to adjourn. Oh, maybe, well, not two or eight, time may. No, 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 no. Not there. I have guaranteed, all right, that we never walk.
Things, things got better when Russo brothers came in.
Yeah, yeah, they did get the road buttoned up a little bit.
Okay, so the last thing you don't have to.
No, because we, that's.
It's just to let you know that they want.
No, that's great to think, because, I mean, that's why I said that, and I, yeah, they're like, uh, I find, I find it hard to believe that that place is anywhere near.
Yeah, we're talking about the road.
Sorry?
We're talking about the road.
Yeah. He knows, he knows, he knows, that's why I was like, yeah.
They were hoping that I wasn't here at the meeting.
Yeah, but I wasn't letting that go by.
I guess I gotta worry about me, too.
Yes.
Yeah, we got, we got on the cover now, all right?
Right, I'm speaking to Asia.
It's just, I'm lucky that, you know, the other day I was speaking to.
So you wanna play all the hearing? Yeah, ban motion, second.